Oh, great. Again, welcome. Um, thank you, everyone, for being in presence. This is our first Bernaleo County Commission Administrative Meeting here in Ken Sanchez's chambers in Alvarado Square. Um, and I call this March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two Administrative Meeting of the Bernaleo County Commissioners to Order. Um, welcome to the first person into the first in-person meeting in our chambers, Ken Sanchez. And I will ask, um, for Commissioner Kessada to lead us in, uh, there'll be a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Kessada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before, before I do that, uh, you know, it's a great honor, and, and I didn't do this by myself, uh, to name the Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. It was, uh, supported by all the commissioners and, and the community. And I think before, uh, we do a little moment of silence, um, although, um, our world is, uh, seems to be in, uh, quite the turmoil at this point, uh, let's not forget those people who are dealing with that. But maybe take a moment within the, the moment of silence to reflect back on Ken Sanchez and, and the kind of work, uh, that he did. Um, I just want to say that, you know, when, when Ken was, was alive and, and we were doing community work, we didn't always agree on everything. Um, you know, matter of fact, we disagreed on, on a lot of things, but that's what this is all about. That's what this process is all about. And it's about us coming together, uh, agreeing to disagree and finding a middle ground in compromise. And that was something that Ken was really good at. And I just want to remind us that that's what we do up here is we try to find compromise and we're trying to find a way forward. And so what better than name, uh, a chambers after a, after a man who was willing to do that and was capable of doing that and that we would take and learn from that example? So, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, please join me in a quick moment of silence.
I would have enjoyed that. Thank you, Commissioner Kessada. And I just want to know, we are planning on having a sort of, um, bigger honoring of Mr. Ken Sanchez at a future commission meeting. Some of, um, his folks that wanted to be here aren't here today, so we'll be doing that at a later date to really honor him and the, um, induction of these chambers, Mr. Ken Sanchez. Thank you. Um, Deputy County Manager Grotti, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we do have one item, which is, uh, Item seven C, uh, Technical Services, New Mexico Department of Transportation, uh, Cooperative, Cooperative Agreement, uh, for Funding to Support Second Street and Rio Bravo Intersection Improvements, Project to Be Removed From the Consent Agenda and Add It to the Agenda as Item nine C, Under Adoption of Resolution, Remodules for Amendments to the Motion. That is, that are the only, that is the only change or modification to the agenda.
Thank you.
And a vote will be required for that change.
Okay, great. Um.
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? So moved. Thank you. Um, so great, we're gonna start off on some great positive notes today. Um, we, I am sponsoring an acknowledgement of May Ling Armijo. Um, the Bernaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor, um, May Ling Armijo County Manager's Office. May Ling joined in 2011 as the Director of Economic Development. She immediately and diligently worked to bring forward projects to achieve the Board of Commissioners' expanded vision for the county's economic development growth. The Economic Development Department's record of success reflects her leadership, commitment, and dedication to the county. During her career at Bernaleo County, May Ling and her team have achieved great success with sixty-nine quality projects approved by the Board of Commissioners and that generated five thousand full and part-time jobs, in addition to over one billion in private investment. We appreciate and respect the work that May Ling has done, and we know that New Mexico will continue to benefit from her leadership and business acumen as we have. Those who know her and have had privilege of working with her have experienced firsthand that May Ling is about business and that business is conducted with integrity and a principled work ethic. May Ling has executed her responsibilities intelligently with expertise and competence honed during her extensive career in public service. While it is not possible to quantify and qualify May Ling's significant contribution to the county, she leaves us with a forward-thinking vision and roadmap that will inspire others in years to come. We would therefore like to extend our deep gratitude for your dedication, professionalism, and outstanding service to Bernaleo County. You will be missed, May Ling.
I didn't, I didn't bring my glasses, so I can't see it, but I, I think, I think they spelled my name right, so thank you. Um, thank you. And I told myself I wasn't gonna cry, but it is an emotional day because, um, it's, uh, eleven years with the county and, and it's been with Marcos. And so I really am crying over Marcos, not any of you. And so, um, uh, so I feel like I'm breaking up, you know, with my partner in crime and in everything, and so I, uh, I, I know he'll be great as the new director, but, um, um, I already miss you. So, um, but thank all of you for your support and your professionalism. And I, I'd be remiss to say if I, if I didn't thank Shirley and Enrico and Elias, they, they were all very supportive in, in helping economic development become a success. Um, and Julie supported a lot of my, um, adventures in the Navy, and I always knew I had a job when I came back, which, um, you'd be surprised, a lot of reservists and guards people still have challenges maintaining their civilian jobs when they go on deployment and whatnot. But that was a concern I never had with Bernaleo County, so I thank you. I thank you all for your support. Um, and I will miss you all, so thank, I know that's shocking, but I will, I will miss you all. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Kessada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would like to say, uh, you can't go. Uh, but, uh, but you know, I'll tell you that May Ling, uh, you know, puts words into action, uh, and she also has always stood up for herself, which was kind of amazing when I first joined the Commission. Uh, she told me no, right off the bat, uh, which wasn't, wasn't a no, she couldn't do it, but no, we couldn't do it that way, and that let me figure out a way to make it happen. And, and, and that was something that made me feel like, you know, um, I could be successful in my role, uh, because as you know, one of my biggest challenges in my district is economic development, is creating jobs and opportunities for the people in my district. And May Ling, and I'm proud to have Marcos still, still there, I'm glad he didn't follow you, uh, but he's not allowed to, uh, but, uh, and, and it's, it's that kind of staff that makes Bernaleo County successful. It's not commissioners, it's the staff that says, no, not that way, but yes, this way. And you've made, uh, a, a big dent in my community, uh, and I'm sure everybody else's community, and, you know, um, we all fight to move up and do, and have other challenges and different roads. So I just want to wish you all the best in your new road, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Pescotti, followed by Vice Chair Ben.
Thanks. I know we're all like jumping to honor you here.
It could be the other way, so I'll take it.
No, we're gonna miss you, and I know that you're just gonna be over the border somewhere, so we can come and visit you. But I guess what I want to share is, my first year as a Commissioner, you said something to me that is gonna make me cry every time I think about it. You gave me like the best, it was a little text message of support, and I will carry that in my heart wherever I go. It has strengthened me and I think just given me the confidence to do what I need to do in my job and in my life. So thank you for that. And also, you know, the first year was, we were meeting, and then you know what happened the next year? The pandemic. And I don't want to let this go by, how much you and Marcos worked with all those pandemic funds and everything that that entailed, going through with a fine-tooth comb, working with Shirley, of course, but seeing how can we get that money out into the community? How can we get that to our small businesses? And there are things that you did that are still ongoing because they were such a good idea, like the patio grants, right? The, the covered patios, things like that. And it's like, wow, that is such a great idea. And I know that started with you and with Marcos and supporting, um, people with, with rent and things like that. There were so many things going on. And, um, I see it's just here, us here today, so I'm gonna say this, that I know that sometimes the city of Albuquerque would come to you and ask how you were doing it so they could do it. But I know you guys worked so hard, like twenty-four-seven, like for months at a time, um, to make such a great impact with those pandemic funds, and it was phenomenal. So, um, I hope that you're getting some rest.
Not really, no.
I hope they don't work you as hard as we did at your new job.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Take my love with you.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I don't think any of you know this, but I first met May Ling in the community when I was at U.S. Eagle Federal Creighton, and my boss Larry Jeter had been working with May Ling, and we were trying to deploy funds, and we were working with businesses that were also going through the county. And I got a chance to meet May Ling, and it was just so easy. It was so common sense. And, and then when I got to work here with her, uh, same thing. Business development is about business development, and that's what you do, and that's all you do, and you just make it work. And, and Bernaleo County is such a wonderful organization in that we get things done. Everybody in this room, you all get things done. And May Ling, you, you embody that spirit, and you just get things done, and I love it. And so anytime I have a question, you're always just, you don't beat around the bush, you're not, you're not careful, you're not political, you just say, yeah, this is what, this is what it is. I think it's a good idea.
It's amazing that I'm still eleven years, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, and I too, Commissioner Kessada, I, uh, when I first heard that she was leaving, I forbid it, uh, but she didn't listen to me. And so, uh, God bless you and, and, uh, happy.
Thank you.
Happy journeys. And, and Marcos, uh, good job, man, you got big shoes to fill, but, uh, uh, she has the, she's given the, you a huge boat of confidence, and I support you in that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
You're gonna be last, I guess. No. It's okay. The chair. Um, I'm gonna miss your Reverend Whitton's sarcasm.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I know you pride yourself in that. But, um, uh, I wanted, you know, in trying to make things work, uh, you know, Commissioner Kessada mentioned that, uh, there are many ways, right, to support businesses. Sometimes we think of traditional ways, but you were always, I think, very open-minded and inventive in terms of how we could, uh, work with businesses, and I really appreciate that. I always felt like I got a balanced view from you in terms of rate of return and all those other things, the questions I asked, I always felt I got a balanced view. And ultimately, that's what I want from staff. It's like, what is your opinion? Give your best guess as to how this, well, not even guess, I should say, but really, you do the, you know, you have the expertise. What is it that you think we should do? Um, and ultimately, it's up to us to make that decision, but I appreciate that I always got that from you, uh, you know, the honest and honest review of different projects, and I appreciate that. And, uh, you know, I wish you could have stayed in the county at least, gonna go to another county, come on. Anyway.
Well, Shirley told me she wasn't gonna retire till whenever, so it was wild. So I was like, well, I can't wait forever, Shirley, so.
You can't lose Shirley either, wait a minute, let me talk.
Right? I always told Shirley, I, I made no bones that I was gunning for a job, and then she's like, well, I'm not retiring for a few years. I was like, okay, well, I gotta go.
Anyway, thank you very much, May Ling.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, um, finally, I would just say, I've been here for a little over a year now, and I have, every time you've come, I always remember the, but if not for this, and, um, really asking those internal questions, and we're thinking about what we're voting on, and, and you, you and Marcos have been so incredible in making me feel like I can ask questions and really learn so much, a great deal from you all. So I know that, um, our next-door neighbor county will be, um, thriving under your leadership, and, um, sad and happy for you to see you, um, onto your next journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Don't walk away. Don't walk away.
Oh, yes.
So, when I came to the county in two thousand and twelve, I came as the Budget Director. And so I met May Ling, and she said, you'll do all right. So we became partners in crime. And what I most admire about her, I told her, you know, coming from P and M, a lot of times you had to deal with people that were in smoke and mirrors. And I didn't like smoke and mirror folks, I liked people that told you how it was, because I can handle that and I know how to deal with it. But they also, like Commissioner O'Malley said, she gave you options on different things. So we, we did do a lot of good things together, you know, always, and we still do. And yeah, she told me she wanted my job. I said, that's interesting, because I was thinking about you for my job, but I'm not ready to go just yet. So with that, I'm gonna tell former Commissioner Johnson, County Manager Johnson Wayne, as I call him, that we'll come back and get you and bring you back to the county, right, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we have another great proclamation this evening with sponsor Commissioner Pescotti.
Thank you. And so this is an acknowledgement of the Bernaleo County Metro Air Support Unit. And so Larry Corin, and if you want to invite any of the other, um, air support and rescue people up BCFD, come on up, and I will read this. Acknowledgement. Bernaleo County Sheriff's Office Metro Air Support Unit acknowledging that in November twenty twenty-one, Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Central New Mexico hosted an all-online Discovery Festival with a virtual exhibit hall as a tool for teachers to incorporate into their lesson plans and to build an inspiring, fun event for students, and acknowledging that registered schools and teachers from all over the state were able to access and, uh, access the content and engage their classrooms with content direct from local New Mexico STEAM, that's science, technology, engineering, art, and math companies, and acknowledging that along with a number of other STEAM companies, including the Bernaleo County Fire Department, who presented the significance of the fire tetrahedron, the Parks and Rec and Open Space Department, who presented a lesson on healthy watersheds, the Bernaleo County Sheriff's Office Metro Air Support Unit, the MASU, gave a presentation that covered the technology used by this team for their search and rescue efforts, and acknowledging all presentations were innovative, informative, and well-attended by Discovery Festival participants, and acknowledging the Big Brothers Big Sisters of Central New Mexico's team of judges watched and graded all of the exhibits and awarded the twenty twenty-one Discovery Festival Best in Show Award to the Bernaleo County Sheriff's Office Metro Air Support Unit. And acknowledge, it's so cool. This is what you're getting. You're actually getting an award. Wait, but wait, I'm not finished.
Yeah.
This was like the little tease. So acknowledging that in partnership with the Bernaleo County Fire Department and University of New Mexico Health Sciences, the Metro Air Support Personnel provide an essential search and rescue response to the community. The Metro Air Support Team of Rescue Personnel have responded to hundreds of search and rescue requests throughout the county and the state of New Mexico, resulting in many successful lifesaving missions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bernaleo County Board of County Commissioners wishes to acknowledge and congratulate the Bernaleo County Sheriff's Office Metro Air Support Unit for receiving this honor and for sharing their knowledge and experience with students and teachers throughout New Mexico, done this fifteenth day of March twenty twenty-two in Bernaleo County, state of New Mexico, and signed by all the Commissioners. So come on up, Larry Corin, and get your certificate and your full award. This is Best in Show, Big Brothers Big Sisters, presented by Honeywell, twenty twenty-one Award.
It's a pretty cool word.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I also want to mention that the Discovery Festival was sponsored by all five of the Commissioners. Um, I believe we gave at one of the highest amounts, so we were given three presentations, STEAM presentations. Here, everybody stand up. Remember how we used to do it in the old days?
We do!
And, um, yeah, Larry, do you want, I'm sorry, Under Sheriff Corin, do you want to talk a little bit about your presentation? And I think, um, the representatives from Big Brothers Big Sisters would also like to say a little bit about that festival, because it was a huge deal.
But with Bernaleo County Fire Department as well, and, uh, and also University of New Mexico. And then we also have another stakeholder here, um, the, the tram management of the, of, of the tram is here today too. And, uh, some of the technology that we, we presented during that, uh, during that conference or that, that broadcast, actually, uh, people got to see throughout the world, and that was when we did the rescue of the twenty-one people up in, on the tram. And so, uh, that was just a glimpse of the technology. Standing behind me are, are the guys who, the guys and gals who ended up doing all the work. There's a, this is just a fraction of them. The search and rescue community, uh, is a big community, and, and, uh, it takes a lot of collaboration. But as a, not only as, as the under sheriff and the pilot for the, for the air support program, but also as a licensed K through eight teacher, it's important that we, uh, that, that we educate our youth and inspire them, uh, to, to work together for, for good, and to apply science and, and technology. Uh, I, I think, uh, I think that's something that's, that's lacking now, and it's a gap that needs to be filled. And with that, uh, thank you, Commissioner, Chair, Commissioners. I'm gonna turn over the mic to, uh, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Sebastian.
Hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, I did want to say that, um, for me, this is, I give presentations all the time, and it's one of the first I've done since COVID. So, um, what an honor to be here tonight, and your words for Ken Sanchez was just very profound for me. I've been CEO for twenty-five years with Big Brothers Big Sisters, and it's very much a servant leadership position. And spent a lot of time with Commissioners and City Councilors, and, and you guys also are doing the servant leadership. You have late nights and, you know, um, being very thoughtful about our resources and how we utilize those. So thank you for your service and for honoring Mr. Sanchez. And with Big Brothers Big Sisters, especially during COVID, our work was incredibly challenging, like anybody serving kids. But the children that are referred to our program, and we serve over fifteen hundred kids every year in mentoring relationships, they come to us because they need additional adult supports. They don't have enough of what they need to thrive and succeed in school. So when COVID happened, one of the main ways that kids get support is going to school. They usually have a good relationship with a teacher, they get to see their friends, so when that's not happening, um, being able to reach out and touch them. We went completely virtual, and we were in their homes, and we were continuing our mentorship. And please know that hundreds and hundreds of volunteers in our community were still giving of their time to do whatever it takes to connect with their mentees and help them during this time. And, um, so these guys that you see behind us, part of what they did was during this tough year, when we're trying to do our events and trying to connect with people, they stepped forward and said, you know, not only are we just gonna show up, which in itself is amazing, but we're gonna do something like so incredible and so exciting that the kids are gonna love us, and they end up getting voted Best in Show. So that's pretty awesome. And one of the best things that we can do in Big Brothers Big Sisters is ignite an interest in kids. So at a time when they may be in a crossroads and not know, you know, is it worth staying in school? Is it worth working hard? You know, I can, I see my siblings that have dropped out, whatever, seeing something like this and going, how cool would it be to be air support and go save somebody? Those are the inspiring times that will ignite that interest in kids, and, and mentors seize on that, and it's like, see, it's worth it. You know, let's work hard, let's go explore STEM and different things. So that's what that's about. And I just want to share a really quick story, because it's a story as you remember. One of my big sisters, I've been a big sister for twenty-five years, but my mentee, I was matched with her when she started as a freshman at South Valley Academy. And we were matched for four years in the program, and then when she graduated, we graduated into what we call our post-secondary class. She's now a junior at UNM. And one of the coolest moments for me is she sent me a text, and she clearly was in a helicopter, and I'm like, where are you? And she said, I just got hired on with the medevacs, and I get to go across the country, and she ended up in California and doing the air rescue and everything, and just, you know, that was her dream that we worked on, and, and it's so fun to be a part of that. So you all, you know, you may not see it as visibly every day, but you're a part of that, and when you support us and do the things that you do in our community, you're supporting us and, and helping us do the work that we do. So thank you for your service leadership, and thank you for supporting Big Brothers Big Sisters. I think Sebastian wants to say just another word about the Discovery Festival.
Yeah, just really quickly, um, my name is Sebastian Martinez, I'm the Chief Development Officer for Big Brothers Big Sisters. Discovery Festival is about igniting that spark, and I think all of us could point to time in, in our life where we had that spark ignited, that I want to become a Commissioner, I want to become a police officer, I want to go fly a helicopter. And, uh, most of the things that we, we really focus on is connecting companies with, with our kids in our community, um, because I think, especially in a lot of our rural areas, they are not given that access, and we're trying to break that barrier. Um, and we're very proud to, to announce that we had over four thousand students participate in both, or excuse me, in Discovery Fest this last year. So we're gonna continue to grow that. I hope you guys will continue to participate and support our, uh, in Denver to spark that interest. Um, and if you guys need anything, feel free to reach out. So that's all I have to say.
And we're always looking for mentors, too, so.
Thank you.
Like May Ling, I don't know what May Ling's doing.
Just one final word. Thank you, Commissioners, for your support, and thanks to the, 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 uh, management staff and, and like Shirley here, and the, and the chief, uh, to, uh, inspire us to continue our work. I mean, sometimes we do these things on a, on a shoestring budget, but we make things happen. We're, we're accustomed to doing more with less, and, and, uh, the air support unit hasn't, it, it's successful because of that drive and that hunger, uh, to be able to serve. So I want to thank you guys. So I want to thank you guys.
I want to thank you. That rescue was like from a movie. But thank you for your year-round service. And also both of my children were, had a big brother and a big sister. So love the program and they stayed in close relationship to them for many years, even after the match. Julianne, is there anyone signed up for public comment today?
Madam Chair, we have one signed up today.
Wonderful.
Mr. Don Schrader, if you want to come down.
Oh, what an honor.
I strongly compliment thousands of Russians who have publicly damned Putin's war against Ukraine. If I lived in Russia, would I have the courage to risk arrest and jail to oppose Putin's mass murder in Ukraine? Millions of people under communist dictators and millions of people under US-backed dictators would be so glad if they could speak on television their conscientious convictions with no fear of being arrested hours later to suffer torture, prison, execution, all wars by every nation, the United States, Russia, every nation, all wars by every nation, murder moms, dads, and kids. My weekly TV program airs every Monday evening at 8:00 PM on Public Access Cable, Channel 27. My program is also on YouTube at Don Schrader, that's S-C-H-R-A-D-E-R, clearly from my heart, those six words, Don Schrader, clearly from my heart. Contact Joseph at 717-1667 if you want to do your own TV program, totally free, including a free technical crew to run the cameras and controls on Public Access Cable, Channel 27. Freedom of speech, use it or lose it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Don Schrader. Appreciate and what an honor to have you in our chambers this evening.
Madam Chair. May I speak?
Yes. Vice Chair.
Mr. Schrader, I just want to tell you it's good to see you again. The last time we spoke was about 25 years ago when I was a student at UNM. And we had several conversations and you're always so gracious and easy to talk to. And I always enjoyed watching your cable show late at night. So glad to see you're still just doing well. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Agreed. Great. So we're moving on to approval of minutes. I move to approve the February 22nd, 2022 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Can I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, approved. Moving on to Approval of Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk, please provide a resolution number for Item 7A. I move to approve the consent.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, would you like to go ahead and go through all of them or just 7, 7A?
Yeah, I think there's only 7A in my.
Okay, 7A. That is FR 2022-21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kessada. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Great, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to Item 8, Adoption of Ordinance to the County Code. Madam Clerk, please provide an ordinance number.
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 2022-4.
Thank you. So A, Fire and Rescue International Fire Code 2021, Chief Pettis to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. What an honor to be in front of you live. There we go. All right. Madam Chair, Commissioners, it's an honor to be in front of you in our wonderful, beautiful chambers. It's a great, a great night for the county tonight. What's before you this evening is the adoption of the International, 2021 International Fire Code. This code will put us in line with the City of Albuquerque and the state as it relates to regulations surrounding any type of fire or build, and it aligns with the building code as well. There aren't a lot of changes that were made to this. We didn't make a lot of amendments to it. We're actually allowing the code to kind of stand on its own. We felt that that was best. There are slight amendments that were made to it, which you were all given about 60 days ago. And I stand in front of you for any questions.
Any questions? Discussion?
Madam Chair, for the record, there was nobody signed up for the public hearing on this item.
Thank you.
I move to approve.
Oh, so somebody, whatever, somebody moved to approve, I guess, ahead of me, so that's okay.
No, I didn't think I was talking.
Oh, sorry.
I moved to approve.
I'll second. We have Commissioner O'Malley moving to approve. Any, and all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, your item passes.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. We'll move to Item, to 9, Adoption of Resolutions. And this is what you're talking about, Madam Clerk. Please provide resolution numbers for Items 9A and B, please.
Yes, ma'am. 9A is AR 2022-22 and 9B is FR 2022-23.
And C doesn't have a number?
I don't think there's a thing.
Madam Chair, we haven't made the amendment to C yet, so we will issue that number when we do that.
Thank you. So we have County Manager Emergency Powers by Commissioner Piscotti.
Thank you. Just a little history. It was two years ago this week, March 17, 2020, when I, I guess I was the vice chair at the time and I called a special meeting because of the COVID pandemic. Outside of here, I also have a master's in public health and I was looking at the numbers and I said, this is really bad. This is going to be bad. And so I called the special meeting of the Bernalillo County Commission at the time and I said, we need to put into place some emergency powers for the county manager because we don't really, there's so much uncertainty about the pandemic. We don't know how this is going to go and we want to make sure that the county is flexible and light on its feet and that the county manager has the powers that she needs to sign off on whatever may come. And so we got through it brilliantly. We are back here in the chambers together as a commission. And so I thought this would be a good meeting to bring forth another resolution that would trim back a lot of the powers that were given in that first meeting two years ago that would limit the county manager's emergency powers to things that, that we really wanted to move fast on, which would be accepting any kind of emergency aid, like federal funding or resources. And so I just want to say this, that over the past two years, the county manager has never actually used those emergency powers in the, in our COVID response. And I think that's important to state because the teams working, the county manager, working with county legal, Ken Martinez, working with Richard Clark, working with Chief Perez, our emergency management team, did all of those things over the past two years with, you know, the work at making sure that people could work at home, getting together masks, the PPE distributions, the vaccine clinics, which were huge, huge undertakings. And that was all done without emergency powers, but it was done because of the great partnership and teamwork. And so I thought at this point, it seems like a really good time to rescind some of those other powers, which if you actually look and read that, that first ordinance that we were working off of, it had a lot of extraneous stuff that we would probably never use, like shutting down gas stations and implementing a curfew. So this is just a much more streamlined version of granting limited emergency powers to the county manager. And if anything, you know, if anything does come up, which I'm, we are all hoping that the pandemic does not spike in a way that we will have to do something really drastic. But if that happens, we can call another emergency meeting and, you know, reestablish emergency powers. But at this point, I think that it's, it's time, it's time to limit that, that first emergency powers resolution. So I move for approval.
Do I have a second? Okay, without hearing then, thank you, Commissioner Piscotti, for bringing this. We don't have a second. Thank you. We'll move to Item 9B, Behavioral Health Initiative, with Charlie Verpo to present.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. Thanks for having me this evening. This item is really a small agenda item to move some money from the Behavioral Health Initiative account to the housing account. So the Behavioral Health Initiative has $1 million that's been allocated to our single-site program. And we want to move 448,000 of that million over to the housing department so they can pay for deposits and rents for this provider. Historically, the housing department has always paid for the deposits and the rents in this case. So we want to streamline the efforts and make sure that the payment goes smoothly over to the provider. So it's really a movement of money from one account to the other and need to bring it forward to you for approval.
Madam Chair, I move approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair.
This discussion?
Yeah. Thank you. I would just like to say, and I know that we've talked about this, that this money is going to Hope Works, which was in the news a couple of months ago about some issues with the city of Albuquerque. And so I spoke with you and it seems like this particular pot of money is, it's more straightforward going specifically through our housing department to specifically pay for rent. So I just hope that we continue to monitor and make sure that this money is really going to help people and that, that process is transparent and that the money is, is just all going for what it's intended, which is to help people who are not housed to have some stable, safe housing.
Yes, thank you, Chair, Commissioner. Appreciate that comment. And absolutely, the county has really particular stringent requirements related to contract compliance. So we'll be ensuring that all the pieces related to the contract are complied with and that they're able to provide the services that are outlined and the objectives that are outlined in the contract. We'll absolutely bring you guys updates as we move forward with this service. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Piscotti. And I just wanted to mention that I think this is such an important piece to what I keep sort of referring to as the ecosystem of how we're thinking about folks living unsheltered, the folks suffering or living with the disease of addiction or mental health needs. And so these single-site supportive housing is such a needed space that I'm just excited to support and thank you for your leadership. And I see Ms. Betty Valdez in and thanks for all the smart folks coming together to, to help provide some relief to our communities.
Madam Chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
First, I want to thank you at Hope Works for all that you do, have worked with you over the years when it was, was it St. Vincent's? So great work. Now, the, the single-site housing, where is that?
So it's located on the campus of Hope Works. So it's right there on the corner, I believe. Mountain and Third.
Gotcha. And so, and this, this pays the rents for individuals in that facility?
Yes, sir. The rents and the deposits for individuals that will be located in that facility. It's a 42-unit site, so they're able to provide both the vouchers for that site and then that is a single site. So it's supported with a lot of others supportive behavioral health services right there. So they have a psychosocial rehab and an ACT program there on site. So those individuals that are a little bit higher acuity, that are recidivating through higher acuity services, like the emergency room or the jail, we can bring them into a place like this and help them to be more successful.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion to, on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. You have a pass. Great. We'll move on to Item 9C. Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. 9C, FR 2022-24.
Thank you. And we have Brian Lobitz to present.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. To echo some of the other sentiments, it's good to actually see everybody in person. This item is for the New Mexico Department of Transportation Cooperative Agreement for Funding to Support the Second Street and Rio Bravo Intersection Improvements, Federal Project Number 830942. For this item, we are requesting an amendment to the third motion, which is currently listed to you within your agenda. The first motion was for the commission to approve and accept the New Mexico Department of Transportation Cooperative Construction Agreement for the Second Street and Rio Bravo Intersection Improvements. The second motion was to authorize the county manager or designate to execute and approve any future funding amendments or agreements for the project. And then the third one, which we are requesting to approve as amended, is to approve the financial resolution, accepting budget provided by fiscal year 2023 Highway Infrastructure COVID Supplemental Urbanized Funds in the amount of 3.5 million. The previous agreement that we had from the DOT just included $2 million of federal funds and a local match of $340,824. They did come back and assigned the 3.5 million for the project in COVID relief funds. We did receive this agreement here recently with a short timeline to get it approved and get it back to the DOT to, in order to authorize the use of those funds. But in our haste to get that in, we did make a mistake in the language for motion three where we did not reference the financial resolution. Per this current agenda item and this 3.5 million in COVID supplemental funds, we do have the advantage that with those federal dollars, they do not require a local match. So with that being said, that will save the county approximately $500,000 for that local match. A brief summary on the project, the Rio Bravo and Second Street Intersection Improvements is going to include turn lane improvements to a Second Street and Rio Bravo, acceleration and deceleration lanes on Rio Bravo as required, lane widening, traffic signalization, lighting improvements, a quiet crossing improvements at the rail crossing that's there in the vicinity, and then better access to the rail runner facility. In addition, this project is part of an additional Rio Bravo corridor project that we have in the area that will ultimately have full improvements through the Rio Bravo corridor from the recent NMDOT I-25 Rio Bravo intersection down to Rio Bravo and Second. And with that, I can stand for any questions?
Commissioner Kessada.
Oh, I was just going to vote for approval.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, your motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excited to drive down Rio Bravo. It's all done. Great, we're moving on to 10 for approval. Great, we're moving on to 10 for approvals. We have Enrico Grati to present concurrence to appointment Economic Development Director.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. So this next item is Madam Manager Julie Baca would like to support and recommend Mr. Marcos, Marcos to this position. She's, he's been working quite closely with Mayling over the years. They are a, they were a dynamic team for the county. We're delighted to have them aboard. And, but this particular motion does require concurrence from the, from the commission. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the board of county commissioners for your action.
I'd like to be the one that presents motion to provide concurrence for the appointment of the Economic Development Director, Marcos Gonzalez. We're fighting over you. All in favor?
Aye.
Just to comment, just, I've learned so much from you. Thank you. Yes, if you have some words to share.
I just want to say thank you to the commission and thank you to County Manager Baca. And I really appreciate this opportunity. And I just know the, the team's really committed to continuing to work and bring good projects that will benefit the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Marcos.
Great. And one more, another exciting Office of Community Engagement and Outreach, Public Art. So there's artwork, two-dimensional.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This item is to prove the county manager to sign purchase agreements with six artists for works of art that were selected through a competitive process that the Burnley County Arts Board undergoes twice a year. And this is an excellent way that we have as a county to support the local creative economy and local artists, both emerging and established artists. And in February, the Arts Board reviewed the unsolicited proposals for existing works of art and then selected these six works for purchase. And these works will become part of the Burnley County Public Art Collection to be installed in publicly accessible areas of county facilities. So I would like to present to the commission these works. We'll bring up the slideshow here. And this is a really diverse group of works, both in terms of the artists and the medium, mediums that they're working in. So Harriet Sotzi and Jane Abrams. Her piece was selected as well. Reg Loving is an artist that's well-established and well-respected in the, in the community. Ellen Feinberg's Mesa Dusk. Jennifer Prezius, who works in incaustic, which is a beeswax medium. And we really don't have any incaustic pieces or very many in our collection. So this is, these will be great additions. And Sixto Dominguez. And these works total $22,133. And there are established funds for the purchase of these works. And with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Is there any questions or discussion for Mr. Swanson? I just want to thank you for this process and providing access to more art for folks. And I move to authorize county manager to approve purchase agreement.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Announcement of the next commission meeting, Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022, Budget Hearing at 9:00 AM here in the Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers. And Tuesday, March 29th, 2022 Administrative Meeting at 5:00 PM here at Ken Sanchez Commune, Commission Chambers. If there's no other me, business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.